Thank you. You're coming to the front door? Am I either way? I think we're just right at the mic.
Everybody's here and there. Saturday night. I'm telling you. We can't talk until we... You have to go somewhere quick. I was gonna put a hat on. Here, like me. There's nothing special about it. Yeah. I believe that. I had a hat on. I was a... I even touched a few minutes before. But it's like... Hey there. It's crazy bad on like...
I'm supposed to talk to a captain. She's a girl.
That's me.
She has a girl when it's... I used to have a girl.
Says you got the name of the cell. Well, I'm not... I used to have my... And he made a reminder. Maybe you do what you say about... I can give you a... I'll send that to you on that afternoon. Good evening and welcome to the Baldwin County Commission Emergency Special Meeting, Saturday, March fourteenth, two... Twenty twenty. It's nine fifteen... It's nine sixteen P. M. We're going to begin. Commissioner Ball will lead us in an invocation followed by Commissioner Davis with the pledge.
Now, please, Ball, you have to... Deputy Father, we're humbled that we're gathered here tonight in your presence. Lord, we just ask you for your guidance and wisdom in this time of uncertainty over this county. Lord, we pray for this whole entire county and all the employees and citizens that live here. Lord, that we will get through this and just give us the guidance and leadership that we need. All of our workers and coworkers and whoever's involved in this, we will just be with each and every one of them and their families. In your name we pray.
Remain standing and join me, humble and proud, in pledging allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, we will make the special meeting call another part of the record.
Madam Chairman, with the motion of... Call it... Call it a record. Set.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Gruber, second by Commissioner Ball. All those in favor, signify the same. Aye. Aye. Ayes have it. Next item is we will discuss the coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic, which may pose a hazard to the safety and welfare of the general public.
Okay. All right. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for calling emergency meeting in as we are going to lean forward and be proactive as far as COVID-19 applies in Baldwin County. As you all are aware by now that there is discussion of a case in an area of our county. Although the case is not confirmed by the public, the state public health department, I think it's important for us now to go ahead and turn on resources and go through a couple of decision items that would be important starting off the week coming in the next day. Sunday, there are some resources, the sheriff's department, local public health, hospitals and other agencies. We need to begin having a discussion regular operational periods. And my recommendation is that we fully stand up operations at our emergency operation center here in Robertstown for the duration of COVID-19 as it applies to our county, public health and wellness.
This item is a discussion item. This will be a discussion. Okay. All right, we'll move on to item three. We will consider and to adopt an instrument declaring a local state of emergency. We have a... We have a resolution before us. We need to pass it out to each Commissioner. As you can see, this document has blanks on it that we will need to fill in the blanks. Is that right? Don't help me out. First time I've ever done this. Okay. All right. Would you like me to read it out loud? I'll read it out loud if you'd like. Declaration of a State of Local Emergency. Declaring a state of local emergency due to the necessity of precautionary measures and preparations that must be taken by the Baldwin County Commission related to the coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic, which poses a hazard to the safety and welfare of the general public. Whereas, on this date, the necessity of precautionary measures and preparations that must be taken by the Baldwin County Commission related to the coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic that threaten the safety and welfare of persons in Baldwin County, Alabama. And furthermore, said public health hazard threatens the economic functions of Baldwin County, Alabama. Now, therefore, it is declared that a state of local emergency is hereby proclaimed for Baldwin County, Alabama due to the necessity of precautionary measures and preparations that must be taken by the Baldwin County Commission related to the coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic in Baldwin County, Alabama, commencing at...
Nine twenty-one.
Nine twenty-one. P. M. On March fourteenth, twenty twenty. Further, it is declared that during the aforementioned period, the state of local emergency exists. The County Commission of Baldwin County, Alabama, shall exercise all authority, powers and privileges as prescribed by applicable federal law and/or Alabama law and/or local law and/or policies of this governing body. Further, it is ordered that this instrument entitled Declaration of a State of Local Emergency shall become effective commencing at nine twenty-one P. M. On March fourteenth, twenty twenty. Further, it is ordered that this instrument entitled Declaration of a State of Local Emergency shall expire upon adoption of another instrument by this county governing body, declaring said state of local emergency no longer threatens Baldwin County, Alabama. It is done under the seal of the Baldwin County Commission of Baldwin County, Alabama, on this fourteenth day of March, twenty twenty. Do I hear a motion?
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we declare a center of emergency as described in our declaration.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Gruber and a second by Commissioner Davis to adopt this declaration of a state of local emergency. Any discussion? Hear none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Fourth item on our list is consider and or authorize the closure of certain county facilities by direction of the Chairman of the Baldwin County Commission or by adoption of a resolution or other instrument. We have a resolution, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. County attorney is reviewing it. We'll give him a moment. We have resolution number twenty twenty dash zero eight zero. Read this. Regarding precautionary measures and preparations that must be taken by the Baldwin County Commission related to the coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic, which poses a hazard to the safety and welfare of the general public, exercising the authority provided at section thirty-one dash nine dash ten B six of the Code of Alabama in nineteen seventy-five, and without limitation, to close certain public buildings owned or leased by and under the control of the Baldwin County Commission only on... Scratch that. We'll end it with permission. So that last sentence says to close certain public buildings owned or leased by and under the control of the Baldwin County Commission. Period. Whereas, section thirty-one dash nine dash ten B six of the Code of Alabama in nineteen seventy-five provides in pertinent part as follows. B, the governing body of each political subdivision shall have the power and authority. Section six, to close notwithstanding section eleven dash one dash eight, any and all public buildings owned or leased by and under the control of the political subdivision where emergency conditions warrant. Whether or not a local state of emergency has been declared by the governing body of the political subdivision, in the event that any documents required to be filed by a time certain deadline cannot be filed in a timely manner due to the closing of an office under this subdivision, the deadline for filing shall be extended to the date that the office is reopened as provided in section one dash one dash four. And whereas, section eleven dash one dash eight of the Code of Alabama in nineteen seventy-five, without limitation, authorizes the Baldwin County Commission as follows. The County Commission of any county in the state of Alabama may be... Resolution closed... Made by a resolution, close the offices in the county courthouse or other county buildings on legal holidays set pursuant to section one dash three dash eight, or for special circumstances deemed necessary or appropriate. Notice of the closing shall be posted at the courthouse and shall be published otherwise in the manner as the County Commission may direct. In the event that any documents required to be filed by a time certain deadline cannot be filed in a timely manner due to the closing of an office, under this section, the deadline for filing shall be extended to the date that the office is reopened as provided in section one dash one dash four. And whereas, at this time, the coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic presents an existing and increasing possibility of the occurrence of a public health hazard or emergency of unprecedented size resulting from natural causes, said conditions are described in section thirty-one dash nine dash two A of the Code of Alabama in nineteen seventy-five. Comes now the Baldwin County Commission determining that the necessity of precautionary measures and preparations that must be taken by the Baldwin County Commission related to the coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic indeed present an existing and increasing possibility of the occurrence of a public health hazard or emergency of unprecedented size resulting from natural causes. And therefore, to protect the health, safety and welfare of the general public and to preserve the lives of those citizens who work in public buildings owned or leased by and under the control of the Baldwin County Commission, this political subdivision desires to close on March fourteenth, twenty twenty, certain public buildings only as herein below authorized. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Baldwin County Commission in emergency special session assembled that under the authority provided by section thirty-one dash nine dash ten B six of the Code of Alabama in nineteen seventy-five and without limitation, we hereby determine that the necessity of precautionary measures and preparations that must be taken by the Baldwin County Commission related to the coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic does indeed present an existing and increasing possibility of the occurrence of a public health hazard or emergency of unprecedented size resulting from natural causes. And therefore, to protect the health, safety and welfare of the general public and to preserve the lives of those citizens who work in public buildings owned or leased by and under the control of the Baldwin County Commission, this political subdivision desires to authorize by this instrument the closure of all non-essential Baldwin County Commission-owned or leased or controlled facilities on March the fourteenth, twenty twenty. Further, be it resolved that the Chairman of the Baldwin County Commission shall have the authority to determine essential county facilities that need to remain open to respond and mitigate the impending inclement... Does that... Was it inclement weather? Nope. That's the health and public safety hazard. Sorry, guys, this is a copy and paste ordeal tonight. Change that. Okay. Done under the seal of the County Commission of Baldwin County, Alabama, on this fourteenth day of March, twenty twenty.
Madam Chairman. Motion second before we vote, let's hear from similar...
Suggest that we have discussion on this before...
Absolutely.
Madam Chairman, I'm making a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty dash eighty. And a second, and then we'll have a discussion.
Okay.
I'll second that, please.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner... Well, hold on. We have a commotion... A motion and a second. Is there any discussion from...
Yes. Commissioner, I understand. My office is in the middle of evaluation process and we are not subject to a lot of germs and what have you and all that. I would ask that my office reappraisal be able to continue to operate as normal.
You just won't have interaction with the public then?
Certain functions can continue. The public's facey functions may not...
Yeah, that's what we got.
Yeah. Public would not be able to come and see you, but you would be able to function. They'll do those functions.
That's all we care about.
Okay. Any other comments?
I think the same or similar will apply to probably court. You know, we're under an order from the...
From the Supreme Court.
Supreme Court that the courts will remain open, but no in-person hearings will be held. So my court staff will have to be in place and available for any emergency filings.
Okay.
Now, the most people who find to purchase tags, I know that's a big thing, you know, with everybody. Is that going to be... How could... How could we... We don't want... We don't want to help our citizens neither, you know?
Well, I... There were several issues that were discussed in an earlier meeting. For example, employees who have children that are in school that won't be in school. I don't know how the Commission's going to address that. You know, we wouldn't want the children to come to work. Are we going to make concessions for the employees that have no one to stay with those children? We can still process renewals by mail or online. But as far as the public coming in for title applications and that sort of thing, you know, I don't know... I don't know where we're going to stand on that.
Could... Well, then, we probably need to put the message out that, you know, we will, you know... We will stay with... There will be staff to do the renewals online, which will not be anybody at this time able to issue your...
Come in in person.
Come in in person to do it. You can do it online. I think you don't have, you know... Anybody needs it, they can do it.
Well, if somebody has a tag expiring like in March and they're not able to get it done, doesn't this give us that they can get extension?
I think the state will have to give the state department...
Right.
You would have to give that extension.
Right. But can we just try to encourage the... We'll push out the online. Is there... There is a fee to do it by mail. So is there a way to...
Yeah, it's just... It's a dollar.
A dollar? Okay.
And then the ones that will be coming in in person would be, for example, someone that purchased a new vehicle.
Right.
Would have to come in. Someone transferring from another state wanting to transfer title, they have to come in in person. So we would be limiting those services, from what I understand. But my staff would still be available in the office to process online and mail renewals.
If we could, Madam Chairman, and Judge, check and see if... We don't know the timeline that we're dealing with, except right now it's into the future. If there are steps that we need to take or you need to take or attorneys need to take to find out about extending many people whose tags would expire if we're not open then, and they're not able to do the online, they shouldn't be peddled.
And I agree. And the other issue would be driver's license renewals because that's under ALIA.
That's to reach out to ALIA.
You know, you'll have to reach out to them as far as, you know, closing that part.
Well, I think in the resolution, if I'm not mistaken, it states in there that...
Non-essential.
Well, what I'm saying in the other one, I think we're said, you know...
The deadline for filing shall be extended to the date that the office is reopened.
They would automatically get extensions. They automatically get an extension. I mean, you know, it's...
Well, public needs to know that, but then your organization higher up and over...
Exactly. Yeah, the extensions are not... That might discretion.
But see, we don't know, you know... We don't know how long this could last. I mean, you know...
I have a deadline with tax payments. We have tax sale in April. We just mailed out a deadline to pay last week, so...
Could that be done online also?
It can be, but...
Well, I mean, you know, we... We're dealing with something we haven't had to peddle.
I know.
So some circumstances will happen and it's going to be new for all of us. And it's going to shock a bunch of us. And we're doing this to protect our employees from...
Understand.
And the public. So it's both. It's two-fold. I know you got things planned. I know there be things.
We'll figure it out.
Right.
All right.
We also are giving you authority as chair to make discretionary calls. And we're meeting again on Tuesday, so we...
Right.
We don't have to bake the whole cake tomorrow.
Yeah.
That's what I mentioned. We need to talk through, make sure we know how this is going to work. So if this authorizes the chairman to do this, we can work between now and Monday and now and Tuesday and make sure that we have this kind of fleshed out so that we all are understanding and in agreement which way we're going to go.
This just gives us the authorization from now going forward until the state of emergency, until we pass another document in.
Yeah, we don't have to have a whole nother...
So we're not...
We'll give you a broad...
Well, we'll work...
And we're fortunate that tomorrow is not an open day. So we're not going to sleep tomorrow. Okay. All right. Okay. So just stay in complete touch with all of us and let us know your needs, our staff, so we can make the right decisions for you, okay? For everybody. Any other discussion?
Well, all right. So basically, if we sold all the courthouses and have our people to be meeting, how, you know... How are we going to, you know...
Only the essential people need to be there. Um, well, there's a... There's an order from the Supreme Court that states specifically what goes on in the courthouses and we need to comply with closing the courthouse and only those... I mean, I've got that proclamation or whatever it is from.
Can I ask you something?
Yes, sir.
We're talking about... We got a public meeting on Tuesday. Our regular meeting. We got one public here. If we're keeping the public like this view on eye and only type situation, what I mean, how do we cancel the...
Will we cancel and postpone the public hearing? And if so...
We can postpone. We can postpone.
If there's any cost or hardship created by doing this, is that something that we should weigh or something like?
Yes. I mean, although it shouldn't be... The only... The only cost would be additional publishing, perhaps, if that needed to happen.
We'll have to re-advert...
But see, nobody will be there. Is us to continue the public hearing? If we cancel it or whatever, then they're going to have to process again. If we continue it or to another date in the future, then all that, so they'll track.
Right. We'll just continue. The cost of re-advertising is a hundred, two hundred bucks. It's not much, but since there won't be anybody there to heed that when they would otherwise expect to be there to hear it continued, it might be on the safer side better to...
If it's one, is that... Can this do by himself?
You know, there's probably... This is not a contentious public hearing.
Yes. So then said that no one... This public hearing, no one came to the public commission. I don't just think they come to the...
Nobody's...
But it is a public hearing. You have to open it in front of the public.
Well, you do. You've got to open it.
We'll still do the public hearing. We'll still do... We'll still do the public hearing. Actually, Carl Johnson called me and asked me about it. He said that it's an estate that he represents. And he wanted to know about coming up to the public hearing. And this was before all this came about. I said, well, you're welcome to come to the public hearing. He's... I said, do you want to come all the way to Baymanet during tax season? He said he had to come for other court business, so he may not have other court business, but he may. I don't know if it's one of those other things. So, you know, I mean, that... But if someone from the public decides to come in, you know, we, you know, can't disallow them to walk in the door, can we?
Yes, you can't.
Okay. Okay.
That most certainly is.
Okay.
And then, if we could, whatever publicity or statement is made, I'd like for us to reference it being a planning presentation rather than a public hearing because the public will hear this and think, well, this is a new place. I can get labor information on the situation that we're in. When in fact, it's merely to deal with the real estate.
All the advertising for that public hearing has been done.
It's done.
This is just in the process. I don't... I'll ask this to be very, very brief. I don't think we'll have anybody there.
And he can... And Monday, he can reach out to them and say, you know, this is what...
Okay. Any other?
I don't think it's any... I don't really...
It wasn't...
It didn't seem contentious early on.
I received nothing.
So let's just recap what just happened.
Okay.
You... That thing that you just read, I just want to get this right.
Yes.
Has authorized the closing of these buildings. And it's your discretion.
Based on...
Yeah. Limiting public access, running the ones that need to run or closing the ones that need to be closed.
Non-essential, as basically what it says.
This is good to the duration of...
It's the closure of all non-essential Baldwin County owned or leased or controlled facilities.
So what's non-essential?
Well, I think... What I suggest is...
What are essential?
Well, I think here, even like, I don't think plenty is essential. Anything like that.
Judge?
Madam Chairman, just to clarify, where does this leave the county employees to come Monday morning or even Tuesday?
What I suggest is that we gather the department directors and inform them tomorrow and talk through this. If that's okay with the Commission?
Bring us a suggestion.
And bring a recommendation to you.
Recommendation.
This doesn't close anything. It just authorizes the closing by the chair. And so she's going to need input from everybody in order to get there.
We're just doing this now so we don't have to do another meeting and all.
Well, that's kind of the way I was following it, but like I say, I wanted to...
It don't hurt that. Please, trust me.
I don't want my boys to not come in Monday, you know?
But when we meet tomorrow, obviously, we would need the input.
You know, the Secretary of State sent in requests also. If we do close, you know, that they allow the registered absentee managers to have access to the facilities.
And I clarified that with the secretary's office last night. And what they said that that means is that the voter registration in person has closed. They just need to be in there working to get the stuff ready. There wouldn't be any interaction with the public, but they needed access to the courthouse area where they would be. The employee, yeah. Yes. Yes.
That's fine. Yeah, that's great.
Okay. All right. Anything else before we take a vote? None? Hearing that? I forgot. Is it you and you? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Resolution passes. All right. We're down to item five. Says considering or authorize any other actions related to the coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic. Do those going to go together? No. No. Okay. I just saw that aim. This is a catch-all? Okay.
Yep.
So we make a motion to... No? A motion? Okay. Then... So that just means that any other actions that come... This stuff is happening almost by the hour, as we know. Okay? Then number six, considering or authorize the cancellation and or rescheduling of any Baldwin County Commission meetings as necessary. So we will notify anybody of a cancellation as necessary. Okay?
That currently means, of course, our meeting Tuesday, the seventeenth is on board. And the one other twenty-fourth is...
Unless we hear something else. Okay?
Imagine, Madam Chairman, that like, what if planning question meetings don't even work?
Absolutely.
Any other...
Absolutely.
Where the public is interacting?
Yes. Okay. That's the whole reason for this, is to protect the people. So that being said, as necessary, we'll notify people. Okay? Any comments from the public? Any press questions?
No press?
Any Commissioner comments?
Madam Chairman, I just like, so I think, you know, what we're doing is the best thing we could do at this point. You hate to have to close a facility and hinder, you know, people from doing business in this county. But you also have to look out for our employees and also other citizens of this county by people who do not take heed to, if they have sick or something, coming into a public building, sneezing, coughing and doing everything else and spreading this virus. We don't need to spread this virus in this county.
else, and, and spreading this virus, we don't need to spread this virus in this county, we need to keep it, try to keep it as tight as we possibly can, so I, you know, I thank everyone for coming forward today and doing this, and I think it's, it's gonna be rewarding.
Mr.?
Yes, I want to commend everybody in this room, particularly Zach, you and your people, y'all are dealing with these kinds of things all the time, this is one that I think's new for all of us, and it's very significant that we take it as seriously as we're taking it, and I ask that our friends in the media, let's be sure, since we're not being told by the public side, let's be sure and caution all of our citizens to be mindful of limiting being a part of big groups, that's what it amounts to, and it doesn't protect you, but it maybe minimizes the likelihood of getting something or spreading something, and we just need to keep our lines of communications open, and we'll try to get things back operating as normal once things become.
And I think a word that we probably also need to get out to our employees is that, you know, if they can't make it, it's not gonna be held against them, I mean, you know, I think that's...
We will, we will get some recommendations from our department heads, and we will get that rolled out, so I just want to thank everybody for, for this literally ninth hour, no pun intended there, this is something that is unprecedented, we, there's no way to win in these situations, as I was talking about, you, if you call too early, you call too late, or whatever, so we're trying to make sure that we do the best that we can in these unprecedented areas. As we said before, try to keep calm, wash your hands. That being said, motion to adjourn?
I make it. So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion, meeting adjourned. It is nine forty-six.